All right. In accordance with open meeting law, the board states in the record that this meeting is being recorded by North Reading and may be recorded by other local media. If we could all rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And here is-
Recording in progress.
We're going to start with board member reports, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you for the call.
I hear an email. That's only you?
Yeah.
Talk again, Mr. O'Leary.
Want me to talk again? Okay, that's better.
It only did it that time.
I would just want to congratulate the Board of Health and Health Department for their North Reading Community Fair that was held on October 21st. Tremendous success, a lot of effort put into it, and it showed, and hopefully it's the first of many to come, and they did a fantastic job. Great, great event. Other than that, the committee reports just on the old and new business. I don't know if my colleagues have been reading the paper in relation to Governor's Housing Proposal. We're talking about, she's proposing to have accessory dwelling units as a matter of right across the board, across the Commonwealth. We have an Attorney General who's looking to enforce the MBTA Communities Act, which again is requiring communities such as North Reading, specifically, North Reading is one of them, to have more affordable housing, more housing being built, and I just think, and again, I know we're looking to have a meeting with the Community Planning Commission. You know, what's happening at the state level is indicative of the fact that local communities are not doing what they need to do in order to promote more housing and more additional affordable housing, ourselves included, and the issue couldn't be any more timely as far as the accessory dwelling unit. I don't know where the Governor's bill is going to go. I'm sure it's not going to be passed in the form that it's being proposed in, but it's certainly going to gather some attention and an awful lot of activity and potentially some state statute that's going to be mandating us to do something. I'd rather be ahead of the curve. I think we're already behind it, but I think we need to catch up and we need to address the situation that we need to do more and do something about it, and I look forward to meeting with the Planning Commission to find out where they're going to be going with it, proposing for the community, and we just need to be very cognizant and aware and keep pushing the issue as a board here, embracing the concept of what we need to be doing, and encourage the Planning Commission to do so. You know, whether we like it or not, we have to, well, first of all, we should, from a moral standpoint, we should be promoting some affordable housing for people to either age in place here or have their children be able to afford to live here. Secondarily, from where we live geographically, in the suburban Boston area, the need is immense, and it's going to be forced upon us, so let's recognize that and let's take a very conscious approach as to how we're going to address it. So I think it's timely, and I think, I look forward to the meeting with the Planning Commission.
You too. Mr. Waller? You're all set, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, we're good, thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, the Black and Brown Holiday Market is this Saturday, the 11th, from 11:00 to 3:00, right here in Town Hall. This is the second annual one that we're hosting, and it's from the group called the Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices. So when I was at it at St. River Park, it was a good showing. They had fun things there, and so hopefully people will come out this Saturday and come participate with that as well. Lil has, Lil Hartman, our Director of Public Services, has been working on the Transportation and Disability Survey, which we plan to put into the census forms that go out in January, and that's to get a townwide response on disabilities and transportation needs all in one particular package. And I don't know if we have a, I don't know if we've centered, have we established a date for the CPC combined meeting? Do we have that yet? So still working on that?
Yeah, because we really want everyone there.
Yeah.
We're trying to get a date that everybody can be around, which is never an easy task.
Yeah, no, never is, but we're probably looking in December, so if we can keep that going, just so I can pencil it in my calendar, that'd be good. Thank you. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I heard about the health fair and how successful it was, so that's a great job done. I heard about it because they had the spooktacular right after it, so they were able to, thanks to the administration, they were able to, one was indoors, one was outdoors, but because of the rain, they had to pivot, and they did an amazing job doing that, getting one cleared out and another one set up, so that was a great effort by the facilities, people that were over there, so thanks to them. And I agree with your comments about the, us looking at that. I think we've talked about it as a board more than once, accessory dwelling in this Mr. O'Leary, and I hope that we're able to make some progress on that. It's just like the MBTA, because we're not doing enough. They're taking a little power out of our hands and mandating it, so we really should be taking a look at that. I look forward to the input that planning gives us on what their issues were with it. It probably had something to do with fundamental changes that were made to the original one that we were looking at that went over there, so hopefully we can make some good progress on that. And just in terms of old and new business, I just wanted to tell everyone to buy your SpongeBob tickets for the big show that's going to be put on at the high school, Friday the 1st at 7:00 p.m., Saturday the 2nd at 4:00, Friday the 8th at 7:00 p.m., and Saturday the 9th at 4:00 p.m. It's always a good show. Bring your kids, it's a lot of fun. You may not realize it, but the SpongeBob musical is a Broadway show, and the songs were written by all these famous musical artists, so it's a good time, it'll be a good time. That's it. It's not really select board business, but it's fun, fun community business.
I just, can I just add to the, I went to the Friday night game, not this last weekend, but the one before, and saw the band, the marching band play. Unbelievable.
Yeah, he has done such an amazing job with that.
Just unbelievable. And they have like 60, we talked to him afterwards, he had like 67 kids in the program, and that's a huge amount of participation, so-
And their uniforms, finally.
Yeah, their uniforms are pretty wild, too. It was really, it was really amazing to go see that. I mean, we went down to see that specifically, and the game was good, too, by the way. The receiver was outstanding. But the, but just to see the band and how well they did and all the activity they had going on, I used to be in the marching band, I hated it. These guys were way over the top, you know, and just how they do it.
I think they just won the competition, didn't they?
They went number one, yeah, over again, so really just outstanding performance that we have in our town.
Yeah, they come a long way.
It's really amazing.
And kudos to, to, is it Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. O'Leary, the whole musical program.
Kudos to him, he's really brought them to it on the level.
Yeah, it's really impressive. Anyway, sorry to jump in, but just one-
I'm about to see the middle schoolers on Saturday with the middle school chorus and the Wakefield Show. They do a show together with Wakefield, all a cappella, and they were, it's so many kids that want to participate, and that's a credit to the arts programs here, Mrs. Lister and Mrs. King and Mr. O'Leary, and they just keep growing and growing and growing the program, and it's something that, you know, the kids can get into. It's like a family's hard work, they work around the clock, but it's something that they're learning so many amazing skills from it, and be able to be disciplined about their work and everything else like that, their homework and things like that. High anxiety, but you know, that's part of it, is being able to manage it, so kudos to the whole program. I've said it before, too, that they kept it going during COVID, and I think that was just so crucial to their development through those tough years, so anyway, that's it. Get your tickets online.
Well, kudos. Mr. Stoudamire?
A couple of weeks ago, we had our third wastewater committee, and more questions came up, and so far, it is working exactly as we wanted it to, because our first set of eyes by a couple of the members are not necessarily asking for clarification or providing information we haven't, but they're doing it from a different angle, so it's always good when you get a first set of eyes. I can say that mine have been a little wary, looking at the same pattern now for a while, so sometimes, you know, it can, I can miss something. So we are waiting for some answers. Some are going to take a little bit longer, just as the final design from the money we appropriated comes in the next couple of months, but after that, once, once that next set of questions is answered, I'll come back here and request that the, that the board look into sending another, you know, question and answer or straight public hearing, whichever is more useful, so that's where we're at now. And besides that, no new developments on, we discussed a couple of weeks ago that for the 20 Elm Street development, the 40B, it's come back to town, and now it's just a matter of the ZBA and the developer to schedule their, start of their hearings, and then as that progresses, you know, if there's, if there's anything to report or anything that the select board needs to do, which I think is very little at first, I will let everybody know. Is it, thank you.
That's it? Thanks, thank you. I'm very sad to announce that our Housing Authority Director, Aaron Beneky, who has done such an amazing job over there, is, has announced that he's leaving. I don't know if that's news to you.
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
He talks to me privately, but then he put it in an email for us, and we have an upcoming meeting Thursday. He's leaving for full-time work outside of the house. So we will be starting the process of finding a new director, so very sad to hear that, because he really has been outstanding, so hopefully we get someone just as good, if not better. And my next thing was to talk about the Veterans Dinner, but we have our Veterans Director here, so I would love it if you would like to come up and tell everybody about the dinner. About the dinner? Yeah. First one, not one? Yeah. Can I sit here? Yeah. Announcing myself, I guess, right? Sue Magna, Veterans Director. So excuse my voice, I'm still getting over this, whatever it is, a month now, it meant some, but, so the dinner's going well right now. We've got about 145 in the queue. I just, actually just took a message that Senator, State Representative Dave Robinson from Wilmington will be there, and, as well as Senator Tarr. Unfortunately, State Rep. Jones was, didn't have his, the ability to be there, he had some, some other engagement. This year, they're turning it up a little, usually the cadets, usually you've done the ceremony, the missing man table ceremony. This year, they're doing Old Glory, so they're literally going to talk about, about the flag, and then they're going to be coming out, and they're going to show how to fold a flag, and they're going to talk about what every stripe on the flag means as well, all the pieces of the flag. So that's kind of, and it's something I haven't seen myself, so it's going to be very interesting. So the dinner is going to be chicken parmesan or with salads and rolls and dessert and appetizers, coffee tea. We have all the centerpieces completed, so 24 of them all done, but we were able to raise enough money, thanks to, you know, the community at large and businesses at large that responded, we were able to bring the tickets from $40 down to $20. So that was a huge, that was huge for us. We're going to be doing that, obviously, on Veterans Day as well, so, and in the Veterans Day ceremonies, we're gearing them more this year to, not just to the veterans, but we want to incorporate a lot about families. So one of our guest speaker, our guest speaker is Christie Stevens, who lost her dad, he's a Vietnam, he was a Vietnam veteran, who succumbed to all his medical issues, years of it. She is going to talk what it's like from the child's side, what it feels like, and what she, you know, what they, how they lived, what their life was like, you know, having to go through all this, and then I'm going to work on the other side with what it's like on a mother's side, what a parent feels like. So, and then we have Debbie Aldridge from our Events Committee, who unfortunately just lost her husband to residuals of, of, of June, you know, actually younger than me. Crazy. She's going to read the, she was a former kindergarten teacher, right? Yeah, she was my kid, both my kids had her. Okay, so she's going to read the book, and we're going to have the kid, that's why I'm encouraging all the kids to come, because she's going to read the book about veterans that aren't able to watch. That's the morning service, right? Mm-hmm. That's going to be the morning service. So, you know, so we're having a lot of fun putting all that together, because I think it's important, and I think it's, people, and we need to understand what, it's not just the veteran and what they go through, it's also what the families go through, and what the children- Right, I think that's great. -that we see, you know, for us, so. Thank you. So can you give us, for both, can you give us times? So Veterans Day Ceremony, 11 o'clock sharp, starts at 11:00. I encourage people probably get there by 10:30, quarter 11, but, and then the dinner will be from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Hillview, let me clarify, at the Ultra Chic, at Hillview Country Club. Am I getting that one right? Yes, yes. And we're all excited about going there. They've been very great to work with, very, very kind, and so that will be from 5:00 to 9:00, with the doors opening at 4:30. So if anybody's still interested in ticket, I can probably squeeze in by tomorrow, but you know, I'm just, let's get them in. Now's the time to do it. Fantastic. Leave a message or an email. Your office? Yep. With the office, yeah. Thank you so much. You're welcome. All right, so that will wrap up board member reports and old and new business, and if you want to stay there, we are going to read the proclamation. You know what, I'm afraid to go.
Here, I got it.
Because my computer's being crazy, if you have it.
There you go.
Thank you. So, am I going to read this first?
You could read it first, or we could take the motion and the vote, and then read it.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Madam Chair, I move to proclaim November 2023 is Veterans Month in North Reading and to read the attached proclamation.
Second?
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor?
I am.
And I would love to read it. "The Town of North Reading Proclamation for November as Veterans and Military Families' Appreciation Month and Veterans Day. Whereas during the month of November and Veterans Day, America becomes one in honoring our veterans to commemorate their legacy of honor, pride, courage, sacrifice, and commitment. America is strong because of their profound love of this great nation. Through their selfless actions, our veterans and warriors have given up the comforts of home and family to defend our borders. We as a nation must support our veterans, for we would not be America if not for their sacrifices. And whereas during the month of November and Veterans Day, we shall continue to honor those who laid down their lives for over 200-plus years of wars. We continue to honor the service and sacrifice of these brave men and women. We continue to pray for the Gold Star families who have had to endure the loss of their loved one. Their family structure has been changed forever. Their loved one remains forever in their hearts as they learn to live with their unforgettable loss. And whereas during the month of November and Veterans Day, we should remain vigilant and continue to support the physical and mental health needs of our veterans and warriors. War is not a distant memory for our servicemen and women. For many, it is an everyday struggle, even years after military service. We must continue to provide services to help them through their struggles. And whereas, during the month of November and Veterans Day, we remember the children of our veterans and warriors who struggle with their mother, father, or sibling serving in the military. Many struggle due to the absenteeism of their loved one away, affecting their everyday life. It is vitally important to support them through these difficult times, be it through schools, churches, and supportive services for military families. And whereas during the month of November and Veterans Day, parents of veterans and warriors struggle with a loved one away from home. They try to keep the home fires burning through everyday responsibilities of attending to everyone's needs. They, too, struggle with stress deep down as they try their hardest to keep life at home as normal as possible. Take time to reach out and lend an ear or a hand to offer support. Whereas during the month of November and Veterans Day, the Town of North Reading will continue to honor and respect our Purple Heart recipients who through their meritorious acts of courage and sacrifice, fought in battles, and were wounded or killed in action by enemy fire. We will continue to honor them especially on August 7th and the month of November each year. And now, therefore, we, the Select Board of North Reading, do hereby proclaim November to be Veterans and Military Families Appreciation Month, and observe Veterans Day on the 11th day of November 2023, with appropriate ceremony and prayer in honor of our veterans and warriors, whose steadfast desire through valor and sacrifice preserved the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. We shall take the time to reflect and remember our heroes and their families for all the sacrifices they have made in order to keep our homeland safe. We encourage you to continue to display the American flag with pride on your homes, offices, and town buildings. Given up the Select Board Meeting the 6th day of November 2023 by Select Board Chair and the Interfiles." Thank you so much for putting that together, and it was my privilege and pleasure to be able to make this a month. To incorporate it all. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that it was a lot, you know, because what the ceremony is aiming toward the children, and I wanted to make sure that was all incorporated with that. I think it's wonderful, so thank you so much.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
You explain this a lot, Mrs. Magna, to me privately. I've asked you this a million times, but the Blue Star families have a person that's overseas or both in service, and the number of stars means the number of members in service?
And the stars, yes, yes, so like I was a two-star, three-star for a while.
So when you see that on someone's window or on their car, that's, that means they're overseas, but the gold star means they've passed away?
The gold star, yeah. The blue star is for the, even the ones that haven't been serving. The gold star is they lost a loved one.
I'm glad that you're zoning in on the family, too, because I don't think people recognize the daily type of a thing that families go through. Some people don't talk to their person for months at a stretch. I mean, as a mom, I can't imagine, you know, it's one thing when your kid doesn't want to talk to you, but they're a teenager, but when they're gone, you don't have the capability to just pick up the phone and call them, and you're waiting for them to check in, all that anxiety that the person must have, you know, always on the top of their mind about what are they going to give from their person and that stuff.
That's probably the reason why I decided to talk my story, because it's a lot, you know, from the family. For instance, like my son actually is coming this weekend, so the first time in 14 years he's going to make the day to make the dinner, too, and the ceremony, and it's going to be the first year in over 20 years that'll have all my kids together for Thanksgiving. Yeah, that's great. Right, and you really cherish that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, not to mention, there's a family in town, the Pockeers, I think, you know, a lot of us probably know them, they, their son is a Navy SEAL, and, you know, I'm friendly with them, and I know there's times when Paula would say, he can't even tell us where, like, we don't even know where he is or what he's doing, you know, I can't imagine, you know. Yeah, we had to do that, too. I remember my brother, given my sister-in-law, like, they had made up memes, so he would make a name up, you know, when he was in Saudi, and people explained to him, so with it, so he'd say, I don't know, coffee, you know, she'd go, oh, I know, he's right here, the pin, you know, so they had their own little secret thing going on. Yeah. Because a lot of people realize that, you notice when they're taking pictures overseas, you just see them. They're not allowed to have to take the backgrounds and post them, you know, especially where we have all that media and everything, but yeah. Yeah, so thank you, you know, I think it, I agree, you know, to shine the light on what the families at home, you know, they're really, they're really involved in that service, too, so thank you. Thanks for everything you do for the best. I'll thank you, I will stack. All I do is time, so. All right, so on to introducing the new Youth Services Director, Mrs. Gilberto.
Susan, thank you. Eleanor, if you want to come aboard and sit there, I'll do a brief introduction for you. I'm pleased to introduce Eleanor Richard as our new Youth Services Director.
Rashard. French is hard.
It's French.
I'm pleased to introduce Eleanor Rashard as our Youth Services Director. Eleanor began working with the town earlier in October. She comes to us from, most recently, the Montserrat College of Art, where she worked in the President's Office doing data collection survey, but also has five years of experience teaching as well through, through grade six. So we welcome Eleanor here. She has been making the rounds in the community and with those who work closely with Youth Services, including the schools. Her office is located at Clint Memorial Library, an office that was constructed adjacent to the Activity Room, where you're able to offer programming now, so we're pleased with that as well. They all know we're short on facilities, but that's a great partnership that we've tried to establish, so she's been here for a little over a month, but again, publicly welcomed, and wish her the best of luck.
Yeah. Are you the liaison for Youth Services?
I'm Richard, I think.
Oh, you're, are you the liaison for Youth Services?
Yes, yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So-
We've already met. I think I'm going to change my name to Rashard. You've inspired me.
Somebody will ever say it right, I have to warn you.
We'll work on it.
Well, we definitely have been needing you, so, you know, you've got a job ahead of you, and very excited to see what you're going to do with it. Really happy to be here, it's been so great so far. Oh, great, that's great to hear.
We met at a town meeting October, I think that was your first day.
It was, my first day.
Oh, out of bad, kiss and through fire, welcome to town meeting. We wish you much success with your programming and all your new ideas, and look forward to working with you, supporting you.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome.
And we're also migrating the Youth Services Committee to not just be an advisory committee, but to be participative, so to volunteer hours, to give her hours that they need to do all the different programming that they're doing. So it's more of a get involved, you know, put in the hours, help her get things done, as opposed to just being a sounding board, so we're, we're in process of doing that right now.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Eleanor.
On to-
Don't feel obligated to stick around for the entire meeting tonight.
Well, my chair was taken, so that's like- Otherwise, she would have stayed. Okay, on to Class 2 Use Card Dealer License Applications, 8 Pilgrim Street, Unit 4, Sascha Stanchev applicant.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, before we get going here, I have a family member who holds a Class 2 license issued by the board, so I will not be participating in the discussion. I'm accusing myself of not being deliberating with the board, and I think the record will show.
Thank you. Record will show, thank you. And Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, the board should have seen in the packet completed application from the applicant, Mrs. Stanchev, who's here this evening. In addition to the application, I also included a copy of the Home Occupation Special Permit, which was required in order for this business to operate its administrative offices out of the property at 8-
of the property at 8 Pilgrim Street. I compare this to another license that you're all familiar with, issued to a company under the name of Honka, H-O-N-K-A, which we renewed a couple of times, similar setup where they are running a, an office out of a location here in North Reading. However, they do not store or keep vehicles here in North Reading, they kept it in a third-party location that generally is not here in town, but although could be depending upon, you know, where the zoning requirement is. So this is the second type application like that that's come up in recent years. It's a little unusual, it did prompt us to consult with Town Council just to make sure we were following this in the proper way and able to lawfully issue the license, and Attorney Riley did confirm that to us, and they have seen that in other communities as well. But appears that everything is in order. The key is the conditions that we're recommending in the motion, which were not in the motion in your packet, but are in the motion that Mr. Wallner will be asked to lead to read, which will limit what can actually occur at 8 Pilgrim Street, I mean, you know, only the administrative offices. But through you, Madam Chair, I'm going to stop. I don't know if you want to ask anything of the applicant or ask him to offer a description.
Yes, that would be great. If you could just tell us what it was you were planning to do, what's the reason that you need to do this? Have you been in business already? Just kind of a.
No, it's something new for me, I haven't been there before. So far, this is something new, I'm still learning, I start the process. What I'm trying to do is to, to build a license, so I can be able to access to auctions, give us, give us money on my motions, or some other cards, and then to work selling directly to the customer. No cars will be stored, no trading, no customers here, no advertising, not, just online business on point-to-point, and it's one of the, it's just to the point of self.
Okay, so kind of an online situation where they buy it online, they do everything online, and then it gets delivered to them?
Exactly, and the transport is so also included, the process, I don't know if it's, nothing will, I mean, because I live in a community, or 14 minutes, and also it's impossible to grow a business to actually, or stay, but I don't need it, so. I already have the approval from the, from the Board of.
Who's on?
And from the Board of the Community where I, where I live.
Oh, in your.
At your other place, at your other place, yes.
Okay.
So something, something new for me, I just want to try to see how it's going to work. If things getting bigger, then we'll move to the next step, we'll see.
Any questions from my, from my business manager?
I did have two. That was something I think that the town clerk recommended to see the approval from the condominium complex, which I, I didn't see that in the package.
So I have not seen that approval either, although I suspect it was probably submitted to the Board of Appeals in some fashion, so we'll certainly, if we want, we can have the approval be conditioned on that, receiving it, because I have not seen that document.
That was discussed on the, on the previous meeting, a couple months ago, on the zoning board meeting. I was, and the Board, I mean, I'm in the Board, I'm one of the Board, and the other, the other two Board members were on the meeting, so they approved it at the meeting. The zoning board.
You're on the condominium association?
Yeah.
With the town clerk, that was one of the recommendations that, that we see that written authorization from the association to allow it?
Right.
And then my other question is, has our, this is for Mr. Gilbert, is our vote contingent upon the bond for the license? Is that part of it?
It's a requirement. We won't issue him the license without him receiving, without him providing the bond for, for sales.
Okay. Yes, it's very different this way, because usually the dealer is, you know, verifying the mechanical sufficiency and there's no deficiencies in the, you know, what's, what you're, what you're selling. I don't know how you do that online, but I'm sure that you do do that, but we would want to make sure that there's a bond posted.
We'll be at that difference.
We, we do check, so we verify the renewal as well, so when they come back in, you know, they're usually perpetual, but, but we'll certainly obtain the written approval of the condominium association as well.
Okay, yeah. Anybody else? Mr. Wallner, Mr. Sudo, any questions?
Madam Chair, through you, just one other item, there was some discussion about whether a Class III Junkyard Junk Dealer Sales was going to be part of this, it is not part of the application. There's a separate hearing process that's required where we need to notify a butters. They probably were already notified through the special permit process, but he is not seeking a junk dealer or, or, you know, parts, that may come down the road. Again, I expect the same conditions, you know, nothing at the property, but to be clear, this is only Class II.
Okay.
Yes, only Class II.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, and I think my motion's okay the way it is, but.
It says subject to all regulatory approvals, I think that that will cover us on that, but I, I'll tell the Board, we're not going to issue a license without those two items.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I move to approve the Class II license for Sasho Stanchev, excuse me, Stanchev, subject to the following conditions. One, operations under the license at 8 Pilgrim Street, Unit 4, shall be limited to administrative office functions. And two, licensees shall follow all conditions of the special permit issued by the zoning, zoning Board of Appeals dated August 10, 2023, and filed with the town clerk September 14, 2023.
Second. All right, I have a motion, and I have a second from Mrs. Manny Cutley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So we have four in favor, one recused, Mr. Wiering. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Wish you well.
Yes, wish you well.
Thank you.
Um, should I have a public hearing?
There should be a public hearing notice, it may only be electronic, I did not print it out for you. Would you like us to print it, Madam Chair?
Uh, let me see if I can, I think I found it. Yeah, I got it. Oh my God. Do I have to wait? Do I have to wait a minute?
No. I can do it.
It's close, I can do it.
I don't know.
Everybody else got Snickers, and I got ham in my dog.
Well, I had to record that. We're going to kill, we're going to kill a minute, because we're.
Anybody? Any good notes?
Legal bills?
What's that?
Should we vote on legal bills?
I'll vote the views of.
No, I think we're good now. Okay, Town of North Reading Select Board Notice of in-person and virtual public hearing, Property Tax Classification. The Select Board will hold public hearing on Monday, November 6, 2023 at 7:45 PM. Oh, by the way, welcome back, Mr. Wiering.
Thank you. I'm back.
To determine the percentage of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2024 in accordance with the provisions of MGL Chapter 40, Section 56. This hearing is anticipated to be held in person in room 14 of the Tamar Hall located at 235 North Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, and via virtual technology as follows. The internet and, you know, the telephone. Any changes to the form and or location of this hearing will be posted on the Town of North Reading website. Interested taxpayers are encouraged to present oral testimony at this hearing or may submit information on your views and writing to the Select Board either via U.S. mail to Select Board, 235 North Street, North Reading, Box 01864, or via e-mail at townadministrator@northreadingma.gov. No later than 12 o'clock noon on Thursday, November 2, 2023.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For the record, I'd like to state that I have a family member who owns commercial property in North Reading, whereas the Board of Assessors are recommending a single tax rate, I will be participating in the discussion and deliberations of the Board because there isn't any recommendation from Board of Assessors for a dual tax classification. Sorry. I believe Mr. Wallner's in the same situation.
I think I'm in the same boat now.
You're in the same boat now, too.
Is that a ditto?
The ditto, that's a ditto. We will be participating because of recommendation.
Oh, yeah, and Mr. Sudo supposedly owns.
Which one?
Yes, sir. I'll put a move in there, so if you just explain.
Okay. That was a joke. I missed it.
Thank you.
We look forward to this, aren't we?
We're back. But whose idea was it to do the Monday after daylight savings time? Really?
Lauren and I were both like, that's a great idea, we got everything certified, let's do it. And then this morning, I'm like, oh, I didn't think.
I figured you needed the extra hour.
Right, I split the difference, I went a bit a half an hour early, so I'm good. I'd like to actually start off by thanking the Board of Assessors and my assessing staff. They've worked incredibly hard this year, hence why everything is certified so early, and they just did a great job. We have one new girl, Marc, been there here now, and she's just proven to be very good at assessing, and she's enjoying it. So hopefully, our department is going to stay up to par with all of our employees, and we're in a good spot.
Crazy.
So that being said, 2024 was an interim valuation year. We are coming up on our full certification year for 2027. That seems so far away, but we will be working on that in 2026. So just to let you know, we still have a long road ahead of us to get to the revaluation The timely certification for new growth, when the amount of 1,483,962 was certified October 10. The reason the increase in growth, Polte ended up building two buildings this year. Normally, they build one, and then they submit the condo docs for usually around the month of October or November. We have received the condo docs for one of those buildings. But the building that's under construction is always part of our new growth. So we had two of those under construction this year, and that I did not know was going to happen when I submit the, my estimate for new growth. That being said, the amount of new single families that are being built, we're, we're in a healthy new growth situation. Polte has two, two more buildings for permanent, they'll be done. So we have a few subdivisions coming online, that'll, you know, we're looking at probably $900 million homes in those subdivisions, as long as our market stays where it is. So those were just a few things that I wanted to point out before we start the classification. So your role tonight is to select a minimum residential factor, vote on an open space discount, deciding of granting a residential exemption, and deciding on a small commercial exemption. We'll talk about those individually. So North Reading, um, yeah, let's stay right here, I'm late. The levy profile for North Reading today is we have 88.13% is our residential value. Commercial, industrial, and personal property make up the 11.87. And then I've just brought down the levies from prior years, which you can look at, I mean, it's pretty healthy. In 2019, we were at 50 million, today's levy is 62. So what is a split tax rate? Communities decide to tax residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property differently. The statute allows an increase in the CIP, Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property, share the tax levy up to 50% higher than the residential. This does not generate new revenue, it real allocates the levy. The tax rates linked in North Reading in prior years were years 1985 and 1988. North Reading's residential property class, we have 4,314 single families. Our new average single-family value today is 811,899. That is up from 745,319 last year. Condominiums, of course, with Polte, were increasing by 50 million here. So we now have 1,007 condominiums. Multifamilies, this is any property that has up to five units, we have 45. Mixed-use, sub-appartement, and commercial, we have 22. Commercial properties, we have 229, we did add one this year, and that's next door. Industrial properties, we hold right at 86. Personal property accounts, those of businesses within the commercial industrial buildings, we have 547 accounts, and that's up from 509 last year.
Is this over vacant land? 194, is that lots?
Those are individual lots. And you'll see, that's always going to fluctuate. Now, we added on those two subdivisions that I was talking about.
Is that already in there?
That's part of the 194. We had 188 last year, like 187 or 188. So now we have the new subdivision of lots, there's no houses in there, but I still picked those up as new growth and still value. Right there. Okay, open space discount.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
Good question, that's okay, that's it.
I should probably.
You, you mentioned in the slide previous that it's just a, a split rate is a reallocation of the levy, which is something we know, you explain this to us every year in, in layperson's terms, of what precisely does that mean? What that means is you, we still have this, the same levy, we have 62 million, 62, let me go back.
236,898.
That we have to collect. That we have to raise to sustain the town. What happens if you just take a vote and split that rate? We're still collecting the 62 million, 236,898. The commercial and industrial properties will have a higher tax rate than your. The commercial and industrial properties will have a higher tax rate than your residential. And there is another slide in here that does show if you were to split, and I've broken it up in like 10%, you know, if you were to split 10%, which I think gives you a better visual of how the reallocation of those monies actually occur. Thank you. I have one other quick question. You also mentioned the new commercial parcel that's next door, the one they're building the road on. What is that business? So what that's going to be is office space and storage. Well, it's not really vehicle utility storage, but they're going to do repairs for their loaders and their big trucks. That's, I mean, it's not going to be a really large building, but it'll still generate some value. It's better, I mean, the two families that was there, it's an improvement to the property. I'll leave it at that. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Studo. My favorite little bit's like this. So the open space discount, you have to legally take this vote, but we do not have any classified open space in the town of North Reading. We do have large tracts of land, but those are all taxed. We have farmland, we have some 61A, which is farmland. We have forest land. At the end of the day, those are all on the tax rolls. So you do not have any open space discount, but you still have to take that vote. The residential exemption. So for this exemption, the board can vote to exempt residential property up to 20%. Again, we're not raising any more money. We are only shifting the burden of the tax levy from lower valued homes off to your higher valued homes. There's another slide in here with that percent in the allocation also. At the end of the day, you're not raising any more money. This residential exemption, there are nine communities, I think it's nine, communities that actually have adopted this. Boston is one. A lot of your communities down the South Shore, because they have summer homes. So this exemption was actually created for second homes, so that they had a higher tax. North Reading, everyone is, they're in their domicile. They don't rent out their home for the most part. It's not a second home, it's their primary home. So just to explain what this residential exemption, the creation of it was for what, that's what it was. It was for something that was not their primary residence. Next slide please. So this next slide, this is for the residential exemption, if you were to go 10%. And you can see right here, I used obviously the average single family, and then I went down to 580, because we only have five houses in the town right now, under 300,000. And three of them are on the affordable. So we really only have two. So this shows you just how that shift would happen with using a 10% exemption. My turn, I want to do one slide please. And then a 15, I don't, do you guys want me to read these to you?
Excuse me, this is just again on the residential exemption. This isn't on a, on commercial industrial?
No, this is just the residential. They're two totally different.
Correct, two totally different things, right.
So in scenario three is for the, up to the 20%. And again, I'm using the average single family for today's current values of 811,899. Now we can talk about the small commercial exemption. The small commercial exemption, for any parcel to be eligible, has to be less than value, less than $1 million, and have fewer than 10 employees. Well, we, every assessor's office in the state of Massachusetts receives this packet, usually in the month of August, and we literally go through it. What that packet does is it's listing all of the businesses in the town with the number of employees. It is not open to the public. I cannot let anyone see it or view it. We go through it, and we put our values on there and see if we have any that qualify. There were five in the town that actually would qualify. So out of the 308 total commercial and industrial properties, five could qualify. And that, there's still another piece to that, to see if they qualify. Those are the first two things, under $1 million and less than 10 employees. So that is one of your votes tonight also. So for the classification, the select board may shift the town's tax burden from the residential to the commercial industrial personal property classes, as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor. North Reading's minimum residential factor is the 88.13, as we just talked about in the other slide. So that means that no more than 11.87% of the residential class burden can be shifted to the commercial industrial and personal property. At this time, you guys always ask what the board recommends, and the board at this time recommends maintaining a tax rate of 1. Do you have any questions?
And I know I've asked this question every meeting, but can you, in your opinion, let us know what, in what scenario we can start looking at a split tax, and what percentage we need to build up the commercial to?
So if I think back to, and I'm just going to work back to answering your question, in 15 years, our commercial industrial property really hovers around that same number. We're 11.87. We don't make these great strides and great jumps. Now, I can tell you, when River Park went in, that's when we went from like, I don't know, was it eight something, up to the 11. So that was a great strike. There are many factors, and this is an opinion, and it's my opinion. When you have a bedroom community such as ours, and you're looking at that residential factor of 88.13% that makes up that tax levy, the financial thing that you want to be cognizant of is not taking our mom and pop stores and shifting that rate where we're running them out of town, or their businesses are closing up. We all, and again, this is just my opinion, the businesses were hit hard during COVID too. We, yeah, we're out of that, but they're still coming to. I mean, I talk to these business people all the time. There's more expenses in a bedroom community where we don't have sewerage here. They have to, you take your restaurants, they have to pump out. They are sucked in so much more. Their expenses of replacing, repairing, the list is long. If we were 640 or 730, okay. But in my opinion, in looking at the consistency, where are residential tax levies stays, being at this 88%, I don't know that we're there. And I don't, even if you do decide to shift that rate, my recommendation to you would not be to go to that full shift. I would do it in small increments, because again, we need our commercial levy of that 11.8%, because if we lose that, it's getting shifted to the residential. So we're going to harm them even more. Again, that is just my opinion. That's all that is.
Thank you. I think you were asking for a percentage, like when does it?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, she gave 75, 25, I kind of, you know, imagine.
So back in the day, and probably I'll date myself right now, it used to be 730, and that used to be what was in the MGL. I mean, that's when they would say you can shift. It really was, didn't come down to, you know, everything being 12 and 80%. And you had to have 730. You didn't have any other variation. So that changed in 1979. So that's. Two percentage points of that personal property too, so even smaller. That business percentage is really, is really so high.
It's only getting worse. Madam Chair, I think it's important to piggyback on what Ms. Carbone was just pointing out, is that the biggest jump that we had in the split, you know, from 88, you know, it was less than 10%, 8%, was commercial industrial, was with the River Park 93. It's important to note that River Park 93, through special legislation, was tied into the MWRA and has sewerage, and therefore has a higher concentration of buildings and structures on that one parcel, has become our single largest taxpayer, and one fell swoop. That's one parcel, the end of Conkers Street, had that significant of an impact because of sewerage, because of sewerage. You know, so it's important to highlight, you know, we're not even close to approaching a situation where we could reasonably consider a dual tax rate from a fairness standpoint. We can consider it every year, but from a fairness standpoint. But again, with the proposal that's being put forth for the town's consideration, think about what could happen out on Conkers Street, what's there now, and what could be there for future potential development and new growth in getting a shift of commercial industrial properties if the project were approved and we go through. All it's going to do is provide additional tax revenue for the town to continue to operate and maintain at a level of services that we currently enjoy, as well as an opportunity to consider some sort of a property tax shift to give additional tax relief to the residential property owners here. Without it, it's not going to happen. So that's a prime example. One parcel became our single largest taxpayer, still is today, and had a shift of three basis points, and one fell swoop because of one factor. And so it took a special act of the legislature to get it done. So important to note. One of the other things, because we get asked, we all get asked, and I think part of the slide here didn't come through as far as the fiscal year '21, '22, '23, and '24 for the commercial. You know, if there was a shift, you know, what can we save a residential average, residential taxpayer? You know, if you shift 10%, then what does it mean to the average assessed value of commercial or industrial property? You know, it was generally a small amount, and I think it got cut off in the presentation that we have here.
There is another slide.
Yeah, but it's not complete here, so I don't, we can't see it here.
The next one should be the part.
But I think that's what, when I talk to people and say, you know, what does it really mean if we were to shift, you know, the tax rate? What's the impact? You know, I could save you 50 bucks or $250 a year, but it's going to cost the average assessed commercial industrial property several thousand.
That's right, that's right. Especially if you shift all the way up to 1.5.
Yeah, we're not going to go one more, but I would just say, but even at a 10% increment, now what can I save you? You know, 20%, if we go to the max, how much can I save the average family home, homeowner? And what's the impact of the commercial industrial property, and what does that do to the businesses that are here?
That's right.
Might want to come here, may want to expand here. But I don't see it, that's why I, maybe it's, so I didn't know if you could just quantify that, so that we, when we go out and talk to the people in the public, we can just say, this is all, this is the most we could ever do for you.
I'll give it to you.
Yep.
I have it.
Yeah.
I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Yeah, but it's not, unfortunately, it's not a significant.
It's not. Mr. Studo's calculator.
On the average, if you apply, if we use 811, and instead of applying 1321, we applied 1189 on the scenario where, you know, 10%, the average home of 811 would save 1,000 a year, 1071. That's the average. I'm basing on the 811 number.
But what's it going to do to the average commercial industrial assessed valuation, which might be assessed at $1,500,000?
That will.
That it's going to be hugely significant, because it only represents 12% of your populace. So it's not a straight line.
It's not an idea.
No, it's just not a straight line, it's not even $1,000.
Well, based on that, Mr. Old Terry, yeah, it will add, on that $1,500,000 with a 10% shift, I'm just doing the commercial number, it adds a couple thousand roughly. That's the 10% shift, which is not huge.
Not huge.
So if we did, I mean, let me ask you this as a piggyback. When towns that do it are fortunate enough because they have that bigger base, how much do they usually shift? I know I've seen some extremes, like Burlington is kind of extreme, like they really shift heavy, but.
Right. They're actually, they're shifting to the 1.7. But their, but their commercial base versus their residential, I mean, I don't obviously have their LA4 in front of me, but I can tell you, their, their commercial base is probably 50 or 60%, and their residential is probably 30.
Because even in a nearby community, Mr. Gilberto's Peabody seems to have a really low residential tax rate versus commercial, correct?
With the ability to shift, yeah.
Walden has a 30% longer occupied residential exemption, but they have a huge, huge industry there. They have one right there, they have 16, I mean.
The moral of the story though.
Look at Linfield. Linfield has marketplace, they also have sewerage too, something like that.
More market street.
They have Route 1, they have some, some nerve road, that has a lot of commercial on it. So there's, every, every community, every community has its own unique things to it. I mean, if I had to really compare a community to North Reading, I would look at Middleton. I would look at Middleton. Middleton and North Reading are, and not just because I'm from there and I know it well, but, and I know their values well too. But, um, it, we're very comparable. We have very similar percentages in our commercial, in our industrial. We don't have sewerage. And I can tell you, there's, there's businesses that say they want to come there. The park up at the Doubletree, when they built the, um, the indoor water park, when we had a conversation with a guy from Ohio that was actually building it, he's, we, I asked him, I said, because we're right on the line with Danvers with that old job? And I said, why wouldn't you build it on the Danvers side? He goes, because they have a split tax rate. So he was very open and honest about it. I mean, but was that, is it a lot of revenue? We do, we get a lot of revenue from it. But is it still enough with what we have? We're, we're only a twelve percent there too.
So moral of the story is we're nowhere near it, so there's no point in looking at it, which I agree.
Go back to that pie.
So I put this, well, I put it in over here, but this, I think it just kind of gives us a little more of a visual to where we are with our pie, you breaking it down. I don't think we really have any discussion. So this is just the scenario if you were to shift, where you're going to be at and how the allocation. Because again, we're never raising any more of the tax levy. The levy is always going to stay the same. You're only shifting it from one class and putting it on the other class.
So that part of the split, the split tax.
Yes.
And then the other scenario of residential is shifting it from the lower value onto the residential for a higher value that's already paying higher taxes for the residential exemption because they have a higher value parcel.
Right. Exactly.
What it does, it doesn't show here, it doesn't show here what the tax rate on the residential would be when it, oh yeah, I'm sorry, it does, eleven eighty nine versus the thirteen twenty one.
Yeah, I have to fix this slide for some reason. It did cut off, Steve.
What's that?
It did cut off.
Yeah.
I have to fix this one. So these are just giving you some scenarios on, on how it would work if you were to consider splitting the tax rate and where the reallocation would go. The savings. I mean, you can clearly see on the residential, if you split it to one ten, it'll reduce the proposed tax rate right now from thirteen twenty one to eleven eighty nine. So that amount of levy will go down by two hundred thousand. We have four thousand three hundred and fourteen houses. There, the savings is not all that significant, in my opinion. So anyone have any questions on this one?
Sure. For that residential, is there a base value? Are you looking at the average value of that eight hundred thousand as the?
Yeah, what I did, what I did was I took the, the new average residential home and then I went to what, like a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar home? And we have quite a few two million dollar homes. So I brought it to the two million dollar homes. So that's what it's actually showing you how that would work in the taxes. Based on the thirteen twenty one, um, anticipated rate, proposed rate.
Now I'll go through this to the next one.
Unless there's any other questions. So what's set before you tonight are the four votes that you must take. We do have to have the bills out by December thirty first. If they are not set out, that's a financial burden to the town, but we get them out, no worries. Uh, so what's before the select board tonight is to retain a single rate for F Y twenty four or split the rate for twenty four. Vote on your residential exemption. Vote on a commercial exemption and vote on open space dis. Are there any questions on those votes?
Jay, I have no question on the votes other than, I have a quick question on the sixty one A properties that we have, farmland. Do you know off the top of your head what we have right now in sixty one A?
Two.
Two parcels?
Two parcels.
How many acres?
One is seven, seven point eight two acres. And the other one is twelve or fourteen, I remember. Both of them are actively, devoted cropping. I check them every year.
Middleton's a little different.
Uh, we have a lot more, uh, we have a lot more forestry, we better know.
Really?
We have, we have, I want to say five or six parcels in the forestry. Yeah, and that, that demands a little bit different involvement.
We don't have any.
Forester does a lot of that.
Yeah, we don't have any of that here.
We do not have any forestry. We did have one a pop in April, but they stopped, um, they, they stopped doing it, so.
All right, so we just have two parcels right now.
Two parcels.
Sixty one eight.
Questions? You still want to pick it up? Okay.
Okay. Okay, good.
Yep, uh, we have a motion.
Yep.
Motion.
Do you wish to close the public hearing?
Yes, close the, oh, was, is there anyone on Zoom asking questions?
I do not see any, any questions in the chat or otherwise.
Nobody in the audience? Yeah, we just close the public hearing.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I move to select a minimum residential factor of one point oh as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Could I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary? Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move not to establish a residential exemption.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move not to establish a commercial exemption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move not to establish an open space exemption.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to comment that the Tax Aid Committee is here, myself, Mary, Deb Carbone, and Gail Manning is sitting right there in the back listening in, and the only one we're missing is Mary Ann Kay, Mary Ann McKay. And we are working on, uh, coming up with a, for the twenty twenty five budget, we're working on an enhanced circuit breaker program that is not unusual in the state of Massachusetts. So, uh, we're going to be doing a, you know, we're going to be coming to you probably in December or January to explain the program and to explain the impact of doing that, but how it would benefit people. But it's really for circuit breaker. You go by the state limit and then you would enhance it. You would add it, you know, you would juice it up a little bit to help out the people who are in most need of help, which would be senior people who are trying to have age, aging life in place. And the second part of what we're going to be doing is, um, uh, trying to, we're going to, we're going to recommend that the current Tax Aid Committee, the Tax Aid, I don't even know what it's called.
The Tax Aid Committee.
Tax Aid, uh, that we get rid of the program we have because there's no funding source for it. So we're planning to get rid of that. And the third element is to actually create one landing space on our website where people can find all of this information about how to participate with all of our programs in a cohesive manner. That right now is scattered all over our website. It's hard for people to put their finger on. So threefold, uh, goals is what I think our Tax Aid Committee is trying to do. And we'll have more of that come up, I think, in December or January.
All right.
I'm ready to move on.
So we have our, our motion on the, did we have a second?
Yes.
Yes.
And that was the discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a question?
I, I did, Madam Chair, just see a question pop up in the chat. Says I have a question about the objective of the tax rate shift if there is an open session. I think the question is the objective of shifting the tax rate.
Well, we discussed that, um, you know, that it would lessen the tax rate for residents and increase for commercial, but we don't, we don't have as much of a split as we would like to have to be able to do that. So we will, we have chosen not to do that. Is that into that question?
I believe so.
Mrs. Samantha Kelly?
The objective of a tax rate shift is to shift the burden.
Right.
Either from, uh, either from taking it from the burden on the residential and putting it on to the nine percent of the commercial parcels. That's the objective of that. So then, like Mrs. Carbone said, we have a certain levy we're collecting no matter what. It's just a matter of from whom.
Right.
So tax, a tax, a tax rate shift onto commercial means they're paying more of that levy so that the residential can pay less and the same with the residential exemption. The houses that are paying higher tax for higher assessment would pay even higher opposed to shifting it from the lower valued homes. And it would shift the burden up to the higher valued homes. That's the objective, is shifting it to one segment of the taxpaying population to cover that portion of the levy and taking that away from the other or reducing it for the other thing. We talked about at length, doesn't really make a lot of sense and isn't recommended by the Board of Assessors.
That's wrong. It's got to go on.
Hopefully it ends.
There's two more.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend the fiscal year twenty twenty four property tax levy as sixty two million, two hundred and thirty six thousand, eight hundred and ninety eight, which is thirty eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty five cents less than the levy limit.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second by Mr. Studo because Mr. O'Leary was distracted. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
And last one, Madam Chair, I move to recommend to the Board of Assessors that fiscal year twenty twenty four proposed tax rate be set at thirteen twenty one for one thousand dollars evaluation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in, oh.
Can I just add one part to that? So this thirteen dollars and twenty one cents for a proposed tax rate still has to go into the Department of Revenue for certification. We can't submit the, this, the recap until we hold this hearing. So it's always a proposed tax rate, but I just want to.
Thank you for clarifying.
Clarify that.
Thank you.
Do we see it there? Yeah.
All right, uh, all in favor? And I do see that they said thank you on this. So, um, assuming that the question was answered for them.
Could, could I just add a couple of things while I'm here?
I hope you do. I was going to ask you, I was going to ask you a question too.
So there's, there's just a couple of things having the opportunity in the public out there. Every year in the month of February, we send out what's called income and expense statements, every February. Our return is pretty good, um, considering, but when the commercial industrial taxpayers do not return these forms, they are hit with a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. So that being said, they have, uh, today's November sixth, we're going to be doing the tax file. They have about another week. If they have not returned them, I will still gladly accept them so that they won't recharge that two fifty. But they have to get it in my office within the next week.
Well, hopefully they're listening.
Well, I can only hope, right?
Very gracious of you.
For ten businesses that we have.
Yeah. Um, Mrs. Manny Kelly, did you have a question?
I was hoping, because you do do this for us every year and I see that you put slides in. I think it's really great for you to review the, um, the available exemptions that we have. I think it's, uh, like you said, it's a good opportunity while we have the public. You do it for us every year and, um, this came up at one of the recent town meetings and it was kind of remarkable how you talk about this every year, about each of these exemptions and how little information people actually, you know, have about this stuff, which even though it's published, and I know you put it, there's a section on your page.
On our website.
Yes, that you can access this information, which I think is a great job. So I think it would be great if you could just go through.
Sure. I was, I was.
Yeah, thank you. I, I was reviewing them myself, so yeah, I think that that is important. So thank you, yeah, that would be great.
And I hope that the committee, one of the goals, I think, of that committee is publicizing this information. There's clearly not enough of it out there or misinformation out there about what is offered on these two.
Other towns have nice presentations of putting it in one place so you can find it all in one place. So, yeah, we don't have to go far to find it. We just have to settle in to what we're going to be offering.
And ownership.
Yep.
So under the clauses twenty two through clause twenty two F, those are all the veterans. There are different qualifications for the different amounts of abatements that are, that are issued. I'm not going to read through each and every one of them, but any taxpayer out there that needs or requires any information or explanation, please contact our office, email us, whatever way you want to. Uh, the, the thing with the, um, with the veterans, you do have to have at least ten percent or more service disability certificate from the V A. If you do not have that, then you wouldn't qualify for any of these. So the clause twenty two F we left are additional to the ten percent. So again, just, just contact our office. We'd be happy to answer real, we mail them, we, you know, whatever. I've dropped them off in their mailboxes, I've hand delivered, so.
That does not surprise me.
We also have a pretty active veteran services director who will help check all of that documentation.
And we work very closely with the veterans, um, with Sue and Catherine. We work very closely with them on purpose of these disabled veterans. They're vulnerable population here, so. Right, instead of frustrating them for paperwork, sometimes the paperwork can be daunting. We'll just go through Sue. we'll just go through Sue or Catherine to get their paperwork that we need to qualify them. So it's, it's easy enough for us just to walk across the hall and get that instead of, you know, they don't know.
No, it's important for them to hear that because I think that they could be people who say, that's just too much for them and they don't.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And that's not.
So there's help. You're willing to help them to do that, so that's good for them to hear.
Yes. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the clause 17E, that is for surviving spouse, minor child, elderly person over 70. This is an income asset obligation. We do not set these, the income, we do not set the asset. That is all given to us by the state. We have nothing to do with that except to follow their formula. The clause 37A, that's just a flat 500 minimum. That's for legally blind certificate. And you would always obtain the certificate from the Massachusetts Commission of the Blind. And we just take that and attach it right to your permanent card. One thing I would like to add to these exemptions while we're having the conversation about them is for the fiscal year 24, last year, we adopted the 100% match to the exemption. So it's up to the 100% because there is a formula that we have to follow. The 100% match is not just the veterans, it's for all of our, all of our exemptions. So if you receive the, if you receive the 17E and you have $394.05, it's possible that you could get the match of 394.05. So there's, again, I'm not going to get into, because the spreadsheet's this long, because again, it's state compliance. So we, we really narrowed it down and got our hands dirty with it last year and now we, now it's just a plug and play for us. That's, that's all it is. So just as a reminder, you know, if they have any questions or they just want to call us and ask us if they think they qualify by all means, contact us. Right there. So the 41D, that's, that's 465 and older. Again, that's an income asset that's given to us by the state. The 41A, that's a tax deferral. We talked to many of our residents about this. The tax deferral, we do not have any. I can tell you the last one that we had was in 2010. That's the last one. We only had two at that time. We've had very few, even looking back in the history. The, the tax deferral, they can defer up to, if they, if, if our seniors can afford to pay, say, just take a random number, $5,000 for taxes, they can continue to pay the $5,000 and defer if our new tax rate came out and it pushed their taxes to 10,000, they can defer the $5,000 and just pay the five. I mean, it's, it's not a bad program. A lot of people don't like it because we do put a lien, but that's a protection of the town, that we're going to recoup that revenue. We can't just do it on an in shape. We have to put it under a lien status. But it's, you know, it's, I, I really wish that if we had struggling seniors out there that they would really take advantage of that 41A. I, I encourage it, but again, the last one we had was 2010.
One, okay.
Yes.
Just one thing we should be aware of that the Select Board does have control of is if the minimum interest rate is 4% and the range is up to 8%, right now, previous boards have set it at 8%. So when we talk in December, January, you may want to consider of reducing that down to like a more reasonable level because 8% feels impossible, you know, to me. It's not really realistic. I mean, it's an unusual time now, I know, but, you know, 4% or 5% would make more sense. That would make it a little bit more attractive, I think. I think when people hear lien, they're resisting.
It's, I'll be honest with you, it's as soon as I say lien, but I have to be.
No, I mean, that is what it is.
I, I mean, I, we report it at the registry, but that's a protection of the town to ensure that we're going to receive that revenue as any return.
Totally, yeah.
So I encourage it and I encourage any of the taxpayers to call our office. We'll be happy to help you in any way possible, answer any questions. Right there.
Yeah, again, the circuit breaker, dollar figure, the 20,000, we had no takers anyway because people, there wasn't anybody qualified, very few people who qualified 20,000. So now with the circuit breaker, it's like 65 to 70,000 dollars for a single individual is $95,000, you know, plus for a, for a couple.
Correct. Yeah, 96, 86?
No, it's like 90.
92.
Between, yeah, 90 and a half thousand. And the other was about 65 to 70,000 dollars. So figures are much more reasonable to work with where people would qualify and still while they're allowing a lien to be placed on their property, it certainly gives them the cash flow to live more comfortably and use the equity in their home. And you look at the average assessed valuation, that was 811,000 dollars. Again, we have a number of people in the community who are land rich and cash poor. So their cash flow doesn't allow them to age gracefully at home, well, the only asset, major asset they have is their home, so they can use that equity in their home. And I agree with Mr. Waller, you know, we should be establishing the, the interest rate at the lowest possible, but we're not looking for a huge return on our investment from our residents who have been long-term residents here. You know, with a 4% return, you know, we're tax exempt anyway.
I do, I do know Mary Ann did make a phone call regarding the interest rate and the process and if it can be done, but I haven't had a chance to circle that right over with her on the, but I do know she has that inquiry if we want.
Madam Chair. Also, to piggyback on what you, well, Mr. Waller and Mr. O'Leary said, that no one wants to hear lien. However, the average, this is nationwide, but the average property value in real estate the last 100 years is up a little above 4%. North Reading is, it's been substantially higher, but let's say it goes, delivers back to the mean, meaning that more likely than not, you're just giving up a portion of future gain. I mean, that's what you're really doing by deferring it, meaning that I hear a lot that, you know what, I, I'm not as concerned about my home appreciated. So if you're in that camp, this is kind of a perfect program for you where you're still going to get appreciation over the deferment, especially since, you know, i- if you qualify, let's say your home is maybe under a million, I guess it could be more, right? I mean, there's many people who may end up with a property higher than that and make under the, what did you say, the 66,000 was the circuit breaker? But again, just look at it like that, that from a financial planning standpoint, that more likely than not, your home is going to go up in value substantially over what you're deferring in taxes annually. So you're just, you're pretty much just giving up a portion of it now, so.
Just this last year's example is you had a 9% increase in the assessed valuation. 9%, from 745 to 811 is a 9% increase in assessed valuation. Again, assessed valuation means nothing to people who aren't looking to sell. You know, for those who are struggling to pay their $10,000 real estate tax bill, they want to defer a portion of it. They don't have to defer all of it, but even a portion of it to, you know, enhance their cash flow so they can stay in their home and age gracefully, the return on the investment is pretty good at this particular juncture. You know, and again, if property values happen to stagnate or, or fall, sure, there's a 4% interest rate on it, but your cash flow and your ability to, you know, service your debts and, and live more comfortably at a very reasonable cost.
And again, look at it from the standpoint that, let's say it's nonlinear and some years are better than others, but you end up at that 4% mean. Using last year as an example, Mr. O'Leary, of what you said, if you on average, if you had a home that was worth 600,000 and you deferred the entire thing, which is roughly 8,000 in taxes, but your home went up 54,000 in value, I mean, you could theoretically now defer for a while and you're still nowhere near your increase. So again, I'm comfortable saying that in North Reading, I don't see the pace of increase slowing down. And, you know, also because, what is it, the tide lifts all ships and every time another $2 million home sells, that's just what's happening. But this is a way where maybe now that the big sales of single-family homes coming in will not be so detrimental to someone's pocketbook if they can do that, knowing though that again, maybe you don't get that, but if you're deferring eight but making an average of 30, it's not, it's a pretty good program. Maybe it'll give away the sting of, it, it's when you say lien, because again, it's, it's kind of like when you do any estate planning, you're using words that traditionally were bad.
Right, but I have to be transparent because it is a lien.
Of course.
And I would never be anything other than that. The other thing I'd like to add to this 41A is the fact that if they're eligible for any of the other exemptions, either the 17 or the 41D or any of the veterans, that, they're still eligible for them.
It comes off the top.
Yeah. So that could be of help too. And we always explain it that way to the taxpayer that's inquiring about it. It's, it's just a, a great clause that has been in place for many, many, many years and inter volatile, and I'll call it that, it's volatile, real estate market right now. What a, what a way to be able to age in your home, but not break your bank by taxes.
Without the cost and the fees of a reverse mortgage.
I'm just going to say the reverse mortgage is la fiosa. I mean, it's predatory beyond belief.
And it's all FJ back. That's the best part, it's all federally backed now.
Is it really?
The, the, actually, fun fact, not that it matters, but the discussion about that, all, because there was so much corruption, so what the federal government did, they took over the program, but they didn't cut the fees. So they just cut up the corruption, but they didn't cut the fees. But who are you going to argue with?
Again, you have to keep in mind, I was in that business for about 30 years regulating the banking industry. You know, the reverse mortgage products are good for some people. And again, it's for people who have a substantial amount of asset value in their homes. And again, their income is low and they need to subsidize it and they can just use the equity of their home. But that's a little bit different than what we're talking about here because the dollar amounts are significantly different. You're talking about your $10,000 tax bill as opposed to taking out $36,000, $3,000 a month, you know, and chipping away at the equity much more quickly, plus the fees and everything gets added on to it. But you know, for, for someone like this, for, you know, if you take $5,000 a year and do it for 10 years, you know, that's $50,000 in equity that you've given up at a 4% interest rate. You know, you really, over, over the time, you're doing about $60,000 over a 10-year time period to defer $50,000 on an $800,000 home. You know, sort of pay it back when you sell the home. You know, you've deferred 60, $50,000 worth of income. It's cost you $60,000 in the tail end of things and it's, it's not a bad deal to enhance your cash flow since you stayed at your home and afford to, afford to support the community in the growth that's required to maintain the services here and the good school systems and everything we have and the value in your home. Use the value in your home to do it. It, it can work very well for people. But, you know, it's a tough pill for a lot of people to swallow, basically put another lien on your property, mortgaging your property to a certain degree, but to a much smaller extent at a much lower rate and no usury fees. And it's, it, it's a good deal and I think we need to educate the public.
And Mrs. Carbone, does it work the same way that it just, you know how when you close, you know, you buy a house, right before the closing, the attorney asks for the?
Emulsing.
Whatever is owed, right?
Minutes will lien certificate.
It'll be the same thing?
When the minutes will lien certificate is requested through the, to the treasurer's office, then that lien is noted on there as the debt to the payout.
So it's a line item on the closing statement of a check that goes to the town?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, that was a great discussion. A lot of good information. So thank, any, anybody on Zoom asking any more questions?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening. You also. Good to see everybody.
All right, so we are going to move on. We closed, we did close the.
You did, you did.
Acceptance of deed for Eaton Circle.
Madam Chair, through you, following up on the vote taken at the October Fall Annual Town Meeting, Town Council has worked with Attorney Mann to develop a deed required to be filed at the registry for us to accept Eaton Circle as a public way and to add it to our mileage of eligible Chapter 90 roadway here in town. The, again, the deed's been looked at by Town Council, I believe it's, I know that it's been approved and is in good order with a motion having been prepared. Through you, Madam Chair, I don't know if Attorney Mann has anything further to add?
If you were to answer any question you may have, but I just go off the top of this table. What do you have in this office?
Do we have any questions on that?
For the record, it's off of Mount Byrne Street, on the Park Street end of Mount Byrne Street, for those who don't know.
We have a motion, Ms. Wall?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to accept and record a deed for the fee in Eaton Circle from AAA Asset Redevelopment LLC in the form presented to complete the layout and acceptance of Eaton Circle as a public townway and further to accept and record a confirmatory grant of easements from the same grantor in the form presented confirming and conveying to the town easements for drainage purposes incidental to the use and maintenance of Eaton Circle as a public way and to authorize the chair to sign the required documents.
Second. Second, Ms. Meehan.
Okay, I have a motion and, we're really mixing it up tonight. I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Manny Kelly. Any further discussion?
Hopefully there's not much snow for us to plow now, so it's going to be an acceptance
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And we can move on to public comment. Mrs. Herbert, do you have anything to say?
She has a lot to say, but. She has a lot to say, but.
Not at this moment?
Okay, check.
Not at this moment.
Anyone on Zoom for public comment?
I'm not seeing it.
All right, then we can move on to appointment for Fire Station Building Committee.
All right. Madam Chair, through you, just following up on the vote to establish the building committee, which was to be made up of the members of the facilities, master plan committee, and others added for a slightly larger committee to oversee the building construction project. We prepared the motion. You'll see that the terms reflect the current facility's master plan terms. And for those who have a term limited appointment, such as the fire chief, myself, should say a term limited contract for a fire chief, myself, the DPW director, we've referenced those. And then for the two firefighters who do not have the term, they are simply being appointed for the duration of the project. So I think we got the motion right after going through it, and I believe Mr. Waller has it.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the following individuals to the Fire Station Building Committee for terms to expire as noted. Facility Master Plan Committee members, Abigail Herbert, Finance through June 30, 2025; Donald Kelleher, CIPC, through June 30, 2024; Todd Wokel, D-W, through December 20, 2024; Warren Pierce, CPC, through May 3, 2025; Rich McGowan, School, through May 7, 2024; Mark Hall, Historic District Committee, through December 31, 2023; Kate Maitre Pelley, Select Board, through May 7, 2024; and Chief Donald Stats, in his capacity of Fire Chief, through June 26, 2025; Eric Pepper, Fire Captain, until the conclusion of the project; John Burt, Firefighter, until the conclusion of the project; Joseph Parisi, in his capacity of Director of Public Works, Public Works, through May 12, 2024; and Michael Goberno, in his capacity as Town Administrator, through June 30, 2024.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion, Mrs. Goberno?
I'll just briefly note, I know we generally put names in nomination, but this was a bit of a complex motion, so we wrote it this way. For that reason.
I was going to ask if we needed to say each of one of them.
So we wrote it, we did write it differently because we thought it would be somewhat complex to try to do it any other way. And I will note that two, our two firefighters, fire captain, are recommended by the fire chief.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, you have a committee.
Congratulations. Congratulations and I can.
I'm not involved. You don't have the money.
Who's going to be? Okay. There is a committee that you will fire up. And we're not a fire. All right, we're going to move on to legal bills.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move to pre-legal bills for August 2023 in the amount of $17,722.50 as follows. General, $12,921.50. Labor, $940, 20 Elm Street, $3,861, for a total of $17,722.50.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Studen. Any further discussion?
Just, I think it's important to note, in these legal bills, how much we spent so far on the dog issue?
The dog?
Yeah, it's, it's approached $10,000. And again, I just want to reiterate that the board has done the right thing.
Yes.
And as evidenced by what we're spending now on this issue, it further highlights how we're dealing with a very unreasonable person who is not handling things well or rationally. And again, we've done the right thing as far as that neighborhood. We've done the right thing as far as that animal. And we're doing the right thing as far as adjudicating this thing appropriately. It's just unfortunate that this individual is not handling it very well in the community's best interest.
And, and, you know, let's note, it was a hard pill to swallow for all of us to make that decision. But like you said, for the neighborhood, for the people who had to deal with that situation, it was the right decision. And yeah, he, he continues to carry it on.
But I just think from a disclosure standpoint, I think it's important to know we're, we're paying our legal bills, but a significant portion of this has been, since that date, over $10,000 has been spent, and it doesn't include boarding the dog.
Through you, Madam Chair, to, just, we are, you know, incurring expense to board the dog, provide appropriate veterinary care for the dog as well. We have the ability under the statute to recover the costs, and we fully intend to do so. But we know that those can also become involved processes and time-consuming and expensive processes. So for the record, there is a, you know, continued postponed hearing date that now is coming up, November 30. We are trying to coordinate the participation of witnesses, which is critically important to that hearing going forward successfully, but we are running into some scheduling obstacles. So it is possible that we will need to ask for another date, which may be a number of weeks into the future. But we need witness participation in order to be able to successfully go forward with the hearing. So we are working through that.
Thank you for that update.
And again, I would encourage the administration to pursue the receipt of our expenditures that were allowed under the law to do from the dog. We certainly intend to do so.
Okay.
All right, so.
There are more legal bills when we're set.
Well, I don't think.
We didn't vote on that one yet.
No, that was discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for September 2023 in the amount of $22,687.48 as follows. General, $22,170.48. Labor, $517, for a total of $22,687.48.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm not allowed to do meeting notes, right?
The, the meeting minutes are going to be tabled. And so we can move on to Town Ministers, we should be at work.
Madam Chair, through you, I was going to update on the dangerous dog situation, which I've already done. The only other item I wish to make folks aware of is that, in the same way as we handle the Havrell and Chestnut Street intersection design, we have a, a public information session scheduled for next Monday, November 13, at 7:30 PM in the Activity Room at the library. The DPW is going to be submitting a notice to the transcript that we will also publicize tomorrow on our website and on social media for those who might be interested. But we do have a design that's been put in place for improvements. I think everybody is aware, the intersection did not reap the merit for a full traffic signal, but there are a number of traffic calming implements that are being suggested for not only the intersection, but the area approaching from both the east and the west side of North Street as well. So the public will get an opportunity to have a look at that at this meeting on November 13. And our hope is to come to a December meeting of the Select Board with relatively final designs for both North and Central and Havrell and Chestnut Street intersections, so that we can advertise for bidding and look to contract for work to happen next construction season. So I know there's a lot of interest in the intersections. Those two are moving forward. The public will get an opportunity to have some input at the meeting next Monday night. Thank you.
The, the meeting you had for Havrell and Chestnut had a pretty good turnout. How did you let people know about that meeting?
So we did it through social media, we did it through the town's website as well. And we ended up attracting quite a few folks. So we're going to do that same thing. The thing that we were not able to do, and they did write a great summary after the fact, but we didn't get the notice to the transcript in time for that. So we'll make sure that that happens this time. That was a missing piece in the notification. But yeah, we did get quite a turnout. And we did that hybrid, which can be a little clunky, as we know. The plan is to try to do the same thing. Again, can be a little clunky, but it is workable, so.
All right, thank you.
I expect I'll have a lengthier town administrator report the next week.
Motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, move to adjourn?
Aye.
You want a second there, Regent?
I have a motion to adjourn, and I believe Mrs. Mann, you probably get that second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, what time is it? 9:07. Woo-hoo.